Turn on the mic, call the meeting to order if everyone could please rise for the salute to the flag.
There you go.
Pledge of allegiance.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Aloha, everyone. I had to throw that in.
Getting ready to set sail.
All right, hopefully Noel's online.
Oh, she is.
All right, first order of business, Commissioner Evans, do we have some opening comments?
I have a couple, thank you. Welcome. Glad you could all join us this evening. Our meetings are neutral ground, a place to hear and be heard. Just a reminder, your questions or statements regarding agenda items only will be entertained under citizens to be heard. All other matters will be recognized at the end of the meeting during public comment. Since our last meeting, we've had an earthquake, monsoon rains, and a total eclipse of the sun. Coming soon, billions of locusts will rise from the ground. No, it's not the end of the world. The rain came to wash away the old, the moon blocked out the sun, only so the sun could shine brighter, and the earth shook to celebrate a new beginning here in Callan. As for the cicadas, who knows what they want? Last Saturday, for the first time, all five of our current commissioners were on the field to throw out the first pitches of the 2024 Town Little League season. What a blast. Yes, it was windy and chilly, but the sun was out and spirits were high. To quote Commissioner Mullen, "Nothing but strikes." Splendid time was had by all. We've been getting, we've been hearing from a lot of residents who live in the area behind and around my place. Apparently, there's some serious water issues going on there. Just want everyone to know that our township is on it. And hang tight. As you all know, it's not a day ending in the letters D-A-Y if there's nothing to say about Spackman Davis Farm. Rumor has it, our neighbors at Friends of Spackman Davis Farm, nonprofit 501(c)(3) have proposed holding their historic family picnic on Saturday, June 29th, as a way to share the farm with the public and to serve as a semi-quintcentennial soft launch for Callan Township. And for those of us who use the Thorndale Rite Aid on Lincoln Highway at Bonsville Road, the news of its imminent closing was a bit of a bummer. Not a surprise. Rite Aid is in bankruptcy proceedings and is closing many locations. On the upside, the northeast corner of Lincoln Highway and Bonsville Road is prime real estate for many wonderful things. Watch this space. And remember, when we all work together, there's nothing we can't do. Spread kindness, everyone. Anger, grudges, and resentment are not worth our time or energy. Compassion, empathy, peace, and love, these are what make the world go round.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. I'll just put it out there that an ice cream shop would be perfect in that location. I would work there for free.
Free ice cream, right?
Had to throw that in.
Did you hear that, Paul?
What's that?
I said, yeah, you work for free ice cream.
That's right. That's right. So I'm gonna retire. Citizens to be heard. Do we have any here in the township? Do not see any hands raised. Yes, we do. How? Is it an agenda item? Is it technically an agenda item?
Not really.
Okay. You enjoy hanging out anyway, right? Okay. Any in Zoom world? None at this time. Okay, perfect. Next on the agenda, Township Manager, what do we got? Don, welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. Have a couple of items up for discussion this evening. The first is the Western Chester County Cog had sent a notification, essentially a letter of interest in forming a, if several municipalities associated with the cog had wanted to start a discussion on municipal trash service, a large multi-municipality authority essentially that would provide trash and recycling for that region. They were asking for, essentially, if Callan Township would be interested in such a concept. Now, the letter itself is no commitment required. This is simply seeking, determine the number of municipalities that may be interested, and if there's a considerable number, then they would start the process to explore if it would be feasible. And if it is feasible, at a certain point in time, there would be something before this board to consider joining. So there's a deadline to submit this letter back to the cog of April 22nd. And wanted to bring it to, for the board for any questions and to see if there's interest in pursuing that discussion.
Commissioners, any comments?
It's interesting. We know that our, the cost of the services being contracted out are costing a lot of money. Definitely worth looking into.
I mean, we've looked at this in the past, you know, doing it ourselves, which there is a higher cost if you, with the upstart. If you have multi-municipal, the cost could be split over many different municipalities. But when we looked at it before, the cost of the trucks and repairs and then workers' comp and employees is still going to be the same as what a private contractor has. You know, yes, you can split it over multi-municipal, but I guess my concern is, you know, now we've gotten people used to the four-day schedule. We have the launch clippings pickup, Christmas tree pickup. Like, is cog gonna do all of that that we're already doing, or would it be a loss of some services? And then going back to, I'm assuming they would try to go back to one day a week because either you need, you know, a ton of trucks, or you're gonna have to do it one at a time. And I think that that cost could be astronomical. I'm not against maybe exploring it, but I've just, when we looked at it in the past, the startup costs and then the long-term costs of workers' comp and truck repairs was, was very high. And again, the, the contracts at the time were very fair. They were, you know, $300,000, $400,000 for the year. Where now we're looking up above a million dollars. Yeah, I just don't, I don't know whether counties doing themselves would be less expensive than a private contractor.
Good points. Hey Jane, did you wanna chime in on this since you're?
Well, well, pretty much that's generally what our meeting was about at our last session. And they do have a gentleman that's gonna make a presentation. I think they're already looking at a project that is operating in Oxford Township and maybe another municipality to see how even when we think about the, the truck repair compensation, loss of services. I, I don't know if they're trying to spread this over a group of municipalities to see if it's cost-effective or not. I think these are all the things that everybody's kinda got their antennas out, trying to figure out, yes, we would like to make it so that it's, it's gonna save us thousands and thousands of dollars. But if it's not gonna be, if it's gonna be a loss of service, or if it's gonna cost more to be a part of this project, then obviously, nobody would want it. But I don't think that's what the intention is. I think the real intent is to make it so that it's less costly to municipalities. And the more people that join, and what they're saying is that it's gonna be less for everyone. So is more making it less? We don't know that yet, you know? It could work for some municipalities, may not work for ours. I guess it depends on the size of your municipality, the number of actual pickups you may have. I, I heard something about they already gonna have trucks, or will they be leasing trucks? Who will the trucks actually belong to? Whose liability, you know, you know, responsibility is it to make sure that these things are maintenance? So then, I think it's so new that it's just a barrage of questions and uncertainties. But yes, it is worth researching to see if it could be of any value. So I guess we could leave it there, because there was even something about us using our own road crew employees, which, you know, that could be a problem, or, you know, do we have the manpower? Would we have to hire more people? So again, you know, you look at both sides of it and see the advantages and disadvantages, and then draw the line at that point, I guess. But they're really working diligently to try to answer all of the questions that you have and that I have and so many other people have. So let's see what comes out of it, you know, after it's all put together.
I, I would say too, there has to be a very tight way to get out of it. Because if, if, if it's five municipalities and, and all of a sudden the costs are higher, and they just say, well, we're out, then Callan.
That wouldn't work.
Holding the bag, you know, of this $80 million operation.
Right. Well, seeing like it was more people interested than that, you know, because there, there apparently are people that even aren't a part of cog that apparently have some interest in learning more about this and what it looks like, you know? Instead of just having like two companies that have a monopoly over us, can, what can we do collectively to try to, you know, help save money, you know? And that's what it's all about. Is there something we can do to cut back on trash fees? You know, to help our residents save money and not have to keep increasing it every time our supplier, you know, demand goes up, you know, our costs are driven up. And I think that's what kinda got them to this position to start looking at things a little bit more carefully. What can we do to curtail, you know, these continuously high rates for trash fees, you know? So I think it's like in its, you know, beginning stage and a lot of research, but great presentations were being made, and I think they're really digging into this deeply. So we'll keep you posted. See how it comes along. So I, I guess my response to and for Callan would be that we would like to have a little bit more information to see if it's feasible to get into any type of contractual agreements before we can make a decision.
It would be helpful if whoever was doing the presentation could come and present here.
Yeah. Well, we'll be actually meeting at our township. The, what is it, the last Wednesday of this month? We'll be hosting. And I'll find out, you know, if that person of interest will be in attendance. Yes.
Okay.
I'll reach out to Don and find out. Okay.
I think we have to give them an answer before.
Well, they said they wanted a response by the 22nd, I believe, of April.
I mean, I don't think it hurts to just join in the discussion, and then if it doesn't look right for us, then we don't have to join.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is just more or less, are, are we, would we be interested?
Would we be interested that we're finding a contract to be, to commit to anything at this point? It's just like a letter of intent, I think.
Exactly.
Letter of interest.
Yes. Same thing. Okay, I'll follow through with that then. I'll reach out to you, Don.
Yeah, thanks, Jane.
Sure.
Commissioner Young did bring up an excellent point, too. There's a lot of benefits that we have with the present trash service. You know, the, the Christmas tree removal, the yard waste, these items I do not believe would be part of what the cog is trying to put together. So we may lose benefits down the road.
Well, like you said, we'll see, because if we're gonna save that much, and if it's just collecting trees and things, that may be something that we could do internally. But again, there's just too many unanswered questions to even go that far and sort it at this point.
Yeah, just to explain this a little further, this isn't hiring a, a trash hauler to come to, you know, each municipality. This is creating our own trash hauler.
Right.
You know, and then you're starting from scratch. It's like starting a new company. You got a lot of, you know, upfront costs for the vehicles, the manpower, and you're gonna still have the same issues with main manpower that present services have. That's not a guarantee, even though you might staff it. They're gonna have back issues, they're gonna be calling out the same issues that they're going through. So, you know, we have to keep in mind that it's easier to call a company right now and complain. But then we're gonna sit here and call ourselves and complain? So I, I think we just, yeah, we have to go cautiously into this. If it sounds like a winner and there is a huge savings, it's worth it. If it's a minimal savings, if, if any.
There's one other thing that, that just struck me. Whether it's something we ever do or not, it certainly doesn't hurt for the monopoly of trash haulers to know that there's movement afoot for something like this as they're contemplating what their next contract is gonna look like. You know?
Good point.
Thank you, Jane. What's that? Oh, did we have a hand raised? Yes, let's call it up. Welcome, Mark.
Hi, everybody. Mark DeYoung, 20 Beaver Run Road. Paul, you, you briefly touched on this, but I think it's a very good idea to maybe get all the townships together on, on both fronts. Explore this, of course, but get a bunch of townships together and negotiate as one against the trash haulers. You have a much bigger, you have much more power the bigger you are. So present power. So I think, you know, an idea would be to look at both sides.
Good point. Thank you, Mark. Any other comments?
Just wanna thank you, Commissioners. That was an excellent discussion. I think we'll be able to move forward.
Yes, cautious. Let's see what, you know, what there is out there.
Is there a hand raised?
There was.
Okay.
Next, as, as you may recall, several meetings ago, we had an applicant come before the board with a request for the waived fee for conditional use. In that situation, the applicant, it was really a modification of a prior approval of conditional use. The applicant had paid the initial fee of $4,000 for the initial conditional use and was requesting a waiver for that small modification. In running the numbers, costs would have been substantially less than the $4,000 at conditional use fee, and the board voted in favor of that request. That opened a conversation to the process within the township of how that fee is applied, and it was a very good discussion at that meeting regarding how smaller applicants, smaller projects may be paying more than their fair share in larger projects, the township may be absorbing some of those costs. We went back. Mr. Stackhouse did a, did a review of surrounding municipalities and of course, ran this by our solicitor. The proposal before you up for discussion tonight would be two-phase conditional use, application fee and escrow process. One would be for residential projects, one for commercial. For residential, the application fee, and that would handle administrative functions within the township of processing that application. For residential, the application fee would be $250. For commercial, it'd be $500. That'd be a one-time payment. In addition to that, residential would have an escrow established for $1,000, and commercial projects would have $2,000. If the project would go for either residential or commercial, if it would be under that escrow threshold, that money would be refunded to the applicant. And if it would be over, the township then would be able to go and recoup those costs from the association with, with the project. This, if, if the board considers this to be a fair modification to the fee schedule, at the next meeting, we would bring forward a resolution to make this modification and then be able to establish that moving forward. Any questions or discussion on, on the proposal?
Commissioners?
I think it's absolutely great.
I think we had a lot of discussion about it that night, so I think, I think we're good.
I think it's good that they.
Yeah. Go ahead.
No, it's, it's good that you're talking about the conditional use fee change that it'll affect the smaller companies one way and the larger differently, and also help Callan in, in terms of finances as well. Thank you.
Good. Jane?
No, I was in agreement. I think it was well discussed previously, and it's a good way to show consideration to everyone equally.
Yeah, and me personally, I think it just kinda levels the playing field on, and the fact that the escrow, if, if all the monies are not spent, the escrow is returned or the balance is returned. For the folks, the larger businesses that would cost us more, we've lost in the past. Ray Stackhouse had mentioned, but that, that'll be a continuous rein.
We would bill on a monthly basis for any invoices out to those costs. So if it goes over that $2,000, $1,000 or $2,000 amount, we draw it down essentially on that escrow. We would go to the applicant to have them refresh that fund.
So the townships, we're not gonna take a loss on any future businesses?
Correct.
Perfect.
Right, that's good.
No, it's an excellent plan. I'll reach out here to the residents. Any here in the township building, any comments? None at this time? Any in Zoom? None at this time? Well, this is discussion for the next meeting. You wanna present it?
Next meeting, we'll have a resolution for the board to consider and approve. It'll be adopted and, and rated into the fee schedule moving forward.
Excellent. Make sure you thank Mr. Stackhouse for putting this together for us.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
I'm falling apart.
Okay there, Jane. Jane, you, you might wanna mute.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have two grant programs I wanted to bring to the board's attention. The first of which does have a deadline quickly approaching. It is the Arley Grant. This is the red light enforcement program through PennDOT. So the, the grant fund, it's funded through essentially traffic fees associated with vehicles running red lights in Philadelphia.
In, in Philadelphia?
Correct.
I think they, didn't they expand the program to like Allentown and like third-class cities?
There's four additional cameras in, I believe, Abington, I believe.
Okay.
But they did expand. They are going to be expanding the work zones, I believe, and other locations.
Yes.
Currently, it's funded primarily out of Philadelphia.
We just have to rent a car and keep driving through red lights in Philadelphia.
To bring the money here.
This program can go towards traffic improvements, roadway safety, bicycle pedestrian lanes, things of that sort, traffic signal, signal improvements. And this came, the Lincoln Highway, which I know that's on the agenda for later in the evening, but it was, I asked to look into it, and I did notice that the, there's a pre-application that's due at the end of this month. Primarily, this type of fund would most likely fit on the Lincoln Highway corridor. And looking for a discussion on any improvements along that corridor that you would, the board would like to see included in this, this pre-application. Now, the pre-application is, I don't need to go into very much detail at this time. It's really just to see if it meets the eligibility criteria associated with the grant fund. And that we'll be contacting township to kinda talk through what we're looking to apply for in May. And then we'd be able to build on that to submit later on this year. I really wanted to open it up to discussion, see what the board would, would, would like to see along Lincoln Highway, some of the improvements, and obviously in the pre-application, I can keep it general, and then we can narrow that down to conversations with PennDOT as we move forward.
I would like to see the, if we could include some of the electrical components we were discussing along our streetlights for our Christmas decor.
Oh, for the Christmas. I don't know.
I know, we were saying we need electrical components on a lot of the poles or something. Yeah, for, yes.
I don't know if this would help that out.
It's primarily lighting for a safety standpoint rather than decorative. So I don't know if this would apply for that particular use, but I can certainly look into that more.
Didn't we have a lighting issue over near the Old Dairy Queen nearby?
Oh, yeah, the chief had put in something to PennDOT, this poor lighting over there where that incident happened, where the lady was struck by a car.
Yes.
Yeah, it's very dark along that area.
You're correct. The Dairy Queen area, Lincoln Highway, also Wedgewood, Shox and Wedgewood Dairy, Lincoln Highway. That we've, we've, the data that we looked at over 10 years, there was a higher incident of pedestrians and/or bicycles struck by vehicles in both of those locations. And one of, one of the biggest contributing factors was the lack of lighting, because those crashes occurred during the nighttime hours.
I guess the other thing, too, I had asked before, did, whether the traffic lights had battery backup? I don't know if they do, but would that count as an upgrade to the traffic? If we could, on, on Lincoln Highway, make sure our lights still work if the power goes out for a while?
That could potentially fit into this fund from a traffic signal improvement standpoint. It's certainly something to consider.
There's also that Danielle Otten's office had brought to our attention that there's a handicapped person that needs to get across Wedgewood to the bus shelter, and there's, there's no safe way for them to do that. I don't know whether, would a crosswalk count as a, a ability for somebody to get to the bus shelter work?
Pedestrian safety is a, is an eligible use of this fund, so in theory, yes, absolutely.
And this is a sight, a vision-challenged individual who risks their life every time they cross the street. I, I, stuff like that, bike lane, bike lanes, possibly sidewalks, straight lights, battery backups, traffic lights. Could Vision Zero be bundled in to implement some of the, that?
I would think components of that, that concept could potentially fit in.
I think the PennDOT approved solar on the, so how would that work? Is the lights would be solar-operated then?
I have, I have to look into this. So I saw that as well in the application. Theory, I suppose that would help reduce energy consumption and then the bill ultimately. But I don't know the, that is, I haven't really looked at that program. It's a relatively new one, but it's interesting. I could see that as well.
I mean, I think there's a plethora of, yeah, things.
Yep. In that case.
Jane, were you, were you saying something there?
No, I didn't say anything.
In that case, I'll, I'll work on the pre-application. I'll throw as much in as possible to narrow it down. There's, for this fund, there's no minimum or maximum, but they say they prioritize cost-effective solutions. So I'll, I'll try to pack as much into the pre-application as possible and submit that by the end of the month.
I think we did have a hand raised.
Hello, guys. Mark DeYoung, 20 Beaver Run Road. Mark, I think this one would help you out on the thing you brought up a lot of times about the speeding on Lincoln Highway. That's not a highway, there's families living there. Synchronized lighting. If you looked at, if you ever drive down Chestnut Street and up Wallon Street coming in and out of city, they have synchronized lighting, so there's no need to speed. You can't gain anything by speeding. You end up defeating the purpose. So by going thirty-five miles an hour, whatever the speed limit is, the lights are synchronized, makes traffic flow better and reduces speeding because there's no point in it.
I think years ago, we fiber connected all of the streetlights along Lincoln Highway. I think I think we did. I would have to look back, but I think they are all connected already. Whether they are optimized to to use that fiber or not, that I don't know.
That's a great idea though, Mark.
It works downtown. I know that. Because you you get on Chestnut, you want to try to do forty-five miles an hour, you're wasting your time. You hit the brakes every single light. You know, if you go to right speed, one actually works better on the wide. You know, if you do the right speed, you could just cruise right along and never have to stop.
So true. Appreciate it, Mark.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Yeah, whatever you can do with this.
Well, thank you for the feedback and we'll make sure that's submitted at the end of the month. Next, and this this really dovetails nicely into the next item is multimodal transportation fund application. Deadline's not for some time. It's due in July. But I think if we are submitting the Arley Grant, I wanted to bring this to the board's attention because we may be able to package those two grant funds together to really maximize the impact of any sort of improvement. Multimodal fund, it's funded out of Act eighty-nine of the the Transportation Bill several years ago. And there's two different programs. One is through the Commonwealth Finance Authority, the other is through PennDOT. This particular application deadline is for the Commonwealth Finance Authority. And that deadline is July thirty-first, I believe. So with the board's approval, when submitting the Arley pre-application and grant, we'd like to package it up so they are able to support each other and be able to indicate that in the application that they are, they are not combined, but in submitted with the concept, a larger concept of a larger improvement. The MAX grant application, it's three million dollars is the cap. Minimum is a hundred thousand dollars, so there's substantial projects, but transportation improvements, that that gets eaten up pretty quickly. And then there's there what there is technically in the bill, a thirty percent local match. However, the legislature in twenty seventeen waived that match until for eligible projects, which a transportation project would qualify for. Waived until December thirty-first of this year, twenty twenty-four. So in the future, it's unclear if that thirty percent match would come back, but at this time it has been waived. So really, this is seeking any discussion related to the Arley Grant and approval to try to package these two projects together and get them submitted as a larger improvement.
My eyes get. My eyes got very wide. I like that.
One of the things we talked about, and I'll talk about it when we get there, but the Lincoln Highway Committee did meet and we talked about trying to get some type of traffic or islands in the middle of thirty and starting at the western end and coming towards Acme. Try to keep, eastern end, yeah, I'm sorry, to keep traffic slowed down. And with that, add bike lanes and, you know, other items to.
Trees.
Trees in the middle, like what we were envisioning is where there's no one, no no place to turn, but you have that turn lane. We would put an island there with grass and trees. And that visually, that restricts the road and people slow down because they 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 perceive it to be narrower and not a racing highway.
That is part of the Division Zero plan to reduce.
Are we permitted to put reflective lights like in our bike lanes? Like the reflective weather strips or something?
That, yeah, absolutely. That would be something that could be considered.
Yeah, that would be nice. More reflective lighting on the streets. Because a lot of people do walk along there as well as ride their bikes.
I know some of the bike trails, the bike lanes are kind of faded as well.
Yeah.
Would they be updated?
Through that and some reflective lighting.
Yeah, certainly.
Good comments?
I like it.
Residents? Any comments on this? Tony? Closer to the mic, I'm sorry.
Two five one Loomis Avenue, Callan.
Welcome, Tony.
Ever see the islands up by Harry's?
Yeah, that's almost blocked the road. It makes it even worse, it's difficult for driving.
I mean, you're, yeah, it's all right, but smaller, not how they have it. They it just, you came and drive up there.
Yeah, so we would just envision putting maybe a couple in along the that corridor. Because you need to still have access to people for people to turn into places. So you could only put them where there was no turn, essentially.
I'm just telling the size of theirs, it's it's sort of restrict, it's.
It makes you slow down though, doesn't it?
And if it's snowplow.
Yeah.
It makes it worse, I'm sure.
Yeah, I just think if we could do that in a couple places, it would it would visually make people slow down.
Yeah, that'd be fine. Well, the other day when he accident on a bypass. Down the middle of the highway they come.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you, Tony.
It also, like Josh was saying, you know, it it for it. And people slow down. And then they start to notice the businesses that they're usually flying by. And then they might go, oh, wow, I didn't even know that was there. Let me go into that business. And you don't have people using the middle lane as a passing, an aggressive passing lane, blowing their horns and beautification goes a long way. Quiet, quiet.
I I know all this discussion is mainly Lincoln Highway, but as far as Joe Carlson or some of the other side roads with the walking, I'm not going to say trails, Tony, but you know, the it just, you know, the the sidewalks along Bally Street and and whatnot. Would it also be used for these areas, more residential areas? Or is it just mainly our our Lincoln Highway?
No, no, it could certainly be used for alternative roadways, trails, or walking paths.
Tony's looking at you. You said the T-word.
And we actually, Abby and I, we sat down with our engineer and Judy from their office, who handles a lot of the grants, looking at the best use for these two types of programs, also the DCD Greenways program. And through the through each of the grant programs, hopefully we'll be able to I think we were talking about continuing some of some of the ongoing work there as well. But yes, this can be, this can be used towards trails. It can be used towards pedestrian improvements. It can be used for other types of safety improvements.
Does it include engineering too, or is it just the project itself?
A a portion of it can go toward engineering.
I think it was ten percent. I remember reading something, certain per percentage.
I'll move forward with these two programs and bring it to the boards for consideration in the future.
I'm excited.
Thank you. The last thing I have this evening is it's a proposal. Through conversations, township, there's a lot of work that the Parks and Rec Department has done and other community efforts that have have gone towards improving the township. Tree planting, the Callan cleanup was just last weekend and quite well attended. It's a meadow project behind the Township Building. In looking at some of some other municipalities have done, they tried to view these types of projects on holistic level under the umbrella of sustainability. Now, sustainability from the context of of municipal function would encompass, yes, the environmental improvements associated with the ongoing efforts that committees and and groups within the township are are currently doing. But also from a financial, fiscal sustainability standpoint. A good example of that would be the LED streetlights that have moved forward. It's ways to combine both cost savings to the ongoing operation of the township while being environmentally sustainable and friendly. So trying to marry those two concepts together in a way that encourages a successful, comprehensive growth. Many municipalities have put forward a essentially a task force to develop some of these initiatives to look at what has been done. And and, you know, address any potential opportunities for for the board to consider in the future. If the board's interested, we form one of those here. And it would be a short timeframe, about a year turnaround. They'd be tasked with producing a report to be presented to the board for board consideration. This is, I know, from the staff standpoint, Abby has been very active in organizing these efforts. And this would essentially put all those initiatives on in one report that can be posted on the website and highlight all the the work that that's being done. Some of that work goes towards, for example, sustainability checklist that the township, I believe, is silver. That's from a from a grant perspective is important. A lot of the grant opportunities, they ask you specifically if you are a sustainability community, sustainable community, and if so, what level? The higher level you get, the more points you have in the application. So having a silver designation is very, very helpful. And this type of task force and this type of report could increase that even further.
We used to have a green task force and it just kind of fell apart after Greg Proin left. So I would be very much in favor of bringing something back to with a group of people that is focused on on that, rather than trying to get the Parks and Rec, which already is busy, to do something like this.
Good point. Right, coming?
No, that sounds like a good idea. These sustainable task force to get everybody working together on all the projects and spread out the responsibility to a lot of people, not just a couple under the gun. You know what that's like.
Jane, you want to chime in?
I know. I I like what I'm hearing. And yes, there are a lot of projects going on. And leave it to Abby. We'll we'll have flowers all over the township, so with the number of people that we have on board now with Parks and Recs, and I I'm sure there are more people that like to come on to make sure that these environmental projects and we have the funding and the resources that we need to develop them would be great.
That's good. So we're with this project here, you're looking to create a whole new ad hoc committee?
Yes.
And I assume some of the folks from, you know, Park and Rec are going to jump all over this anyway. Yeah, yeah, because they're they're involved.
There's so many places they could use it, even around the golf course, you know. Just the beautification projects that you can do throughout the township would be nice, even at some of our signs and some of the road signs that we, some of them have already been done over, but just to have, you know, some environmental projects or some greenery or scenery around the entrance signs. There's just so many things you could do, you know, just to make it pleasant.
All right. Well, Don, what what's our next step here if we want to?
So being an ad hoc committee, we can start reaching out to potential volunteers to serve on that 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 task force. If any of the members of the board have any individuals, please let myself or Abby know. And then we'd be able to, you know, we would not, as an ad hoc committee, we wouldn't necessarily, we wouldn't have to make would be very informal. The the group, the goal would be, of course, for the task force members to help develop this report. It should come from the community and be presented to the board as a community-driven initiative. So we would be meeting on a regular basis, but to look at what the municipalities have done, look at their reports and put together something, hopefully within the next year, to to present to the board. I would think we, there need to be some periodic check-ins with the board to make sure that this task force is on the right track. So at least once or twice between that twelve-month period, just a quick presentation to ask any questions and then present what the task force is considering. And then, of course, the final report delivering to the board for consideration. The next steps would be contacting those individuals that have been involved in some of these projects or have expressed interest in newer projects and seeing if they'd be willing to commit some time to volunteer on this ad hoc committee to put together a report for board to review.
Would this board appoint everyone on this on the ad hoc?
Not, an ad hoc committee would not require board appointment. It wouldn't be an official committee, a function of the township. Of course, if the, if if there would be interest in forming a a more permanent committee, then that committee would be appointed by board members.
Okay.
As due to the fact that the task force would be a limited, have a limited run, essentially, of one year, give or take, or until the completion of the report. And then it would be disbanded. So there would not be direct appointments, but of course, any any anyone you know that would be interested would benefit the township to be a part of this process, please feel free to let us know or reach out directly.
Perfect, excellent.
Abby, what do you think? As she grabs the microphone.
I love that.
I can't I can't blame everybody else for not talking in the microphone and not doing myself. I think it's a great idea. I think having, you know, everybody knows I have my little areas of interest and it would be good to make something a little more formal that represents the entirety of the township. And I think other people have their little areas and getting a group of them together to advocate for those separate issues would be potentially really beneficial. Tie in all the things we're doing in a disparate way in a more formal kind of report.
Perfect. I assume you're going to be on this task force?
I would like to.
Comments from residents here? They're all excited. They're jumping up and down. Anybody in Zoom?
Oh, no.
None in Zoom? No comments? All right, perfect. Well, yeah, let's see what we can do with this.
How about it?
Thank you very much. That is all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
I have to ask, I'm sorry, before we go on, there was something that I I meant to mention. I'm not going to name names. But an individual who's very near and dear to me. We we've talked a lot about the intersection at Lloyd Avenue and three twenty-two meetings. Last week, there's video of it. This individual was sitting at that light, waiting for the light to change, make their turn on to left turn on to Manor Avenue. This same individual was previously stopped by a Pennsylvania state trooper for making that turn without letting the trooper cross first. So she's sitting at this light and the light changes and immediately someone in a, you know, a large Tundra truck, whose license plate lays on his horn for thirty seconds. This individual should have just driven away. They start, you know, but turned around and went back and followed the truck into Royal Farms and asked what the problem was. To which point the gentleman, you know, proceeded to curse her out, what's the matter with her? That light changes. You're supposed to move. You move quickly. You're lucky it's me because somebody else would be dragging you out of that car. That light changes, you're supposed to move. You move quickly. You're lucky it's me because somebody else would be dragging you out of that car. And this is in the middle of the afternoon. And of course, I have all of that on video as well. And it's, it's, look, wait, we talk a lot about how the unmitigated rage going on in this, in this world. And, and, but we've got to get it together here. And if we know people are acting like that, we've got to call them out on it. That is just, you know? So anyway, and that was the second incident in one week. Somebody, for some unknown reason, on Lloyd, got ticked off, pulled over, picked up a rock and throw it. And there's, I think there's video of that too. So it's, come on. You know what we need, Tony, to calm people down? Trails. Anyway.
Right before that, chief, do you want to make a comment towards this? I know, I know that was kind of, yeah, Mark kind of.
I just keep meaning to, to bring this to your attention and.
You know, this happens.
You willing to share the, any of those videos or any of that? Yeah, that's a good place to start.
Okay. Thank you. Tony?
About the Boulevard because the handicrafters is down there and it's dark and some of them kids are walking down that street. And it's dark, like when they set the clocks back and stuff like that, they could use lighting back there. And you had said the Boulevard. You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
And it's dark back in them woods, especially that first, before you get to the housing, it's very dark. And that, you know, them kids come out of the handicrafters and walk by themselves. They're not escorted or anything like that. And then they walk up, a lot of them walk up towards the highway, like you said about the crossing. That sidewalk ends right at the parking lot on the left side. They walk up and they have to walk through that where everybody comes to get their weed and stuff. And.
Well put there, Tony.
It's easier that way. It's just easier. But I'm just talking about the lighting for the, the children. For then people, it's, it's, you know, you can put that in your report, you know, that you have handicapped people coming out of there. And they need, you know, to be, you know, lighting for safety. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Tony. Good point. All right. Think we can move on? Well, before we get to the board of minutes, I'm not sure if I did this or not, but we did hold an executive session prior to this evening's meeting. For legal reasons. If I did not state that already, just have that on the record. I was all excited about Mark's opening comments. All right. Next on the agenda, the minutes to approve for March 28th. Commissioners, any comments, suggestions, changes? If not, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved.
Second.
Moved, uh, moved by Commissioner Tindaro, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Minutes have been approved. Uh, next, we have a resolution. Mr. Remazaw, what do you got?
Thank you, commissioners. Yes. Snuck up on us this year, but this week, as a matter of fact, April, it runs April 8th to the 14th. Is Local Government Week in Pennsylvania. There, PSATS, the State Association for Townships, had put out a request for local governments to pass a resolution acknowledging Local Government Week. And this is just a week dedicated to really letting the public, letting residents know all the good work that's done at the local municipal level. Celebrating those that are associated with it from a volunteer standpoint, the community standpoint. And, you know, acknowledging that, that, that really, uh, local government is, has the closest connection with residents. And provides a direct service at, at a level that the other, at state and federal level may not. Uh, so the resolution, and I'll just read a brief section of it. Hence, whereas Pennsylvania's residents rely upon the dedication of local governments in meeting the many health, welfare and public safety needs of the community. And whereas the success of local government is a key element in the overall quality of life. So with the board's consideration, uh, the resolution would, would acknowledge and recognize Local Government Week in Pennsylvania.
I do believe I've heard it said that all government is local government.
Yeah.
So I'm all on board with it.
Glad to be part of it.
Oh, yeah. An honor.
All right. Commissioners, any comments?
So I may, if maybe I missed something, but would, would this actually occur?
This, this, it's this week as a matter of fact. It runs until the 14th.
Right.
14th of April, okay.
Residents, any, any comments? Pretty excited to be here. Good to be involved. Any in Zoom? Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2024-09. So moved.
Second.
By Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Sounds good. Five zero. Thank you. Part of local government.
Yes.
All right, Finance Department, we have a check, check run. We're starting with the check number, so. Well, good. You wrote it down? All right. Thank you. Any manual checks?
No.
Perfect. As Commissioner Young had stated, uh, if approved, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Tindaro, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Checks have been approved. Hey, moving on to the board liaisons. We'll start off Park and Rec, the exciting Park and Rec.
Wow. I just wanted to say a heartwarming thank you to all the families that brought their children out for the Easter egg hunt. Abby's there to attest to the fact that it was probably one of the most well-attended Easter egg hunts in Callan Township history. So maybe we need to raise more chickens, Mark, out there on Spackman Farm for next year. Because I, I know we had over, what was it, 2,600 eggs hidden for the children and that wasn't enough. So I don't know if it was just a result of good weather or that we were, we're growing, we're having growing pains in the township. So many more residents are moving in day by day. So, you know, as we think on next year, I guess we're going to have to think bigger and better, Abby, because that turnout was spectacular. It, it was something really behold. The children enjoyed the park and it was well-maintenance. Thank you to our road crews. And the guys that were out there making sure that everything was safe and clean. It, it, it really looks great over there. So again, thank everyone that participated and hats off to our Park and Recs team members for, for a spectacular job that was well done. Uh, there, there's so much going on in Park and Recs. I, I don't know, Abby, how do you keep up with all these things that are blooming every day? But moving forward, uh, last weekend, we were, uh, able to start our Callan Township annual, you know, cleanup festivities. And that happened last weekend, April 6th and the 7th. It was sponsored by the Midway, Midway Grill. So thank you, Midway, because they provided a little lunch certificate to where you can stop in. And have your choice of famous hot dogs. Uh, we picked up over 185 bags of trash, old tires. And the teams cleaned miles of roads and streams throughout the township. And with that all said, uh, the new Callan Township Cleanup Crew that has been already designed. And I think it's on our website, if I'm correct, looking for more volunteers. So what we're going to be doing is one day each month, beginning May 18th, all the way through November. Uh, there'll be different areas of the township designated for cleanup areas. So we do need more volunteers. There's a nice little incentive reward program that's going to be, um, you know, our way of expressing our gratitude to our volunteers. For, you know, the great amount of time that they spend to keep the township a nice, clean and beautiful place to live. So again, make sure you visit the website because there's tons of information out there where you can sign up. There were a few people, even at the Easter egg hunt, that were so impressed with our festivities and the attendance. That if you hear me, remember you said that you would, you know, reach out to see if you could join Parks and Rec. I'll be looking for you. Also, also, um, we're going to be getting ready for our Art in the Park. Which, uh, again, all these things are on our website. So if you, if you're hearing me and you want to learn more about it or how to get involved. Please go to the website or make sure you use the, read the Callan Township newsletter. Great information. A lot's happening. So instead of me trying to throw all this stuff out, please visit our website, read our newsletter. They put a lot of time in, in making it beautiful, uh, so that you can be a part of everything that's going on throughout the year in the township. So the Art in the Park, this is new and exciting. And this, the theme is celebrating the nature of Callan. And it's going to be free and you can drop in, uh, into the project. And the first one, it's going to be at Municipal Park. Well, they'll all be at the Municipal Park. But the first one will be held on Wednesday, May 22nd, 5:00 and 7:00 PM. So you want to come out. This is going to be interesting for some of the projects that the kids could do. And this is for everyone. Families can come out together, something nice to do after work. This is for kids of all ages. Also, August the 6th, you want to mark your calendar, Tuesday, August 6th, it's going to be our National Night Out. So we've got all these things happening and our summer movie series is going to begin June 21st. With, is that the Mutant Turtles? And we're going to have some martial art demos. So for every movie that we're doing this, this season, we're trying to put in some extracurricular activities for the children to do. So there'll be free pizza that night, martial art demos. And I think we're looking at doing, I don't have it in front of me, Abby, the, the other movies. But again, with every movie, there'll be a theme of the activities so that we can keep the children, uh, very active and animated throughout all these movies. So with the themes of the movies, we're planning, uh, activities around that. Our spring chipping program is going to start or has started on May 6th. So you guys can, again, go to the website, see what all the requirements are to make sure that you're getting your spring clippings picked up at your property. And what must be done to make it easy for our crews to pick up property and where it should be placed. We can't come on your property, but we can pick things up if they're put in the proper place and proper containers. That's all I have. For Parks and Rec so far.
Oh, excellent report. That was jam-packed.
It's jam-packed.
I was trying to take notes as you were talking, but I'm going to have to just watch the video.
Take notes. I, I can't remember the notes. I had it all together and I forgot where I put it. That's a joke.
Yeah, Count Cleanup was a blast. And so many people were involved. You know, I was going to suggest this because I know you run around, I'm, I'm pointing at Abby here for the folks that are not in the room. But I know you tried to get pictures of everyone. I'm wondering if people can send you pictures. Because everyone's out having a good time.
Oh, yeah.
Um, all the other Parks and, so the Parks and Rec people are like ship captains.
Okay.
For the ones that I don't go to and they all sent me pictures after.
Okay.
So a lot of those pictures were not mine. They came from other people. Yeah. People have gotten trained to do that now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I know folks like to see themselves on the website. Yeah. All right. Oh, yes, we have a hand raised back here. Chris, come on up.
Chris Parr, 582 Lloyd Avenue. I just wanted to say thank you to Parks and Rec for the Easter egg hunt. Because I was there with my husband, Tom, and my grandkids. And they just loved it. The Easter bunny was great. And it, it was a lot of work and I, I really appreciate all that you did. And also with the cleanup, it is fun. And I felt it was very satisfying when you pick up all that trash and then it looks so nice afterwards. So a, again, thank you for all that Parks and Rec does.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks.
All right, Jane, you're next with COG.
Yeah. Well, COG, thank you again. You know, most of what we were discussing earlier in regards to, uh, looking to create a hub for trash was like the whole meeting. I mean, they spent so much time trying to, you know, navigate around, you know, what this looks like and how it's operating in another municipality. And trying to sell that, uh, idea and concept as to us becoming more independent of, you know, subcontracting or, excuse me, finding ways to remediate, uh, increase in costs, you know, to our residents. Um, it was lengthy. It was a lot. Um, so we were pretty much kind of stuck there. And then again, they spent a little bit of time talking about the scholarship fund and very close to, excuse me, making that a reality. Uh, where we can put it in the Coast Fair Area School District and neighboring districts for students that are interested in getting it to local government. Which would be nice. And, you know, that would be for high school students, I guess, continuing education students. And we'll learn more about this again, you know, it's, it's good to know that we'll be coasting a, a COG meeting. I think it's in two weeks and we'll be here at Callan Township, uh, to host a meeting. I know that they, uh, used to have lots of COG meetings at the township. So they're very excited about coming back onboard. So we'll be there to welcome them and hopefully to have more meetings right on site. Thank you.
Jane, is that COG meeting here open to the public or is it just for?
That's a good question.
Open?
But if, but what I'll have to do, excuse me, you can come in on Zoom, you know, via Zoom. So I'm sure if you can come in through Zoom, like, I, I would imagine that it would be open.
It's a public meeting, so.
Yes.
It'd be great to have a, a large turnout of our residents.
Yeah.
Show the strength in numbers here.
The Zoom would not be on our website? It would be on the COG?
It'd be, it would be on the COG website, yes.
All right. Thank you, Jane.
Sure.
The municipal authority would be me. At our last meeting, uh, we authorized the chairperson to sign the certificate of partial completion for the Ducklings Learning Center cash escrow reduction. And that's due to the majority of the work has already been completed, so. Gilmore, second items, Gilmore finalized all the contract documents and insurance information required to be submitted by Sewer Specialty Services Company. Uh, for the 2024 grouting project, a pre-construction meeting was held on February 29th. And a notice to proceed was also issued the same day. This is, uh, this project here is in the Colonial Gardens neighborhood, Tony. So if you see some trucks out there, give them a hard time. All right. And last is the, did I write this? Sewer capacity, oh, we authorized the chairperson to sign the sewer capacity reallocation extension maintenance agreement for the, yes, farmhouse coffee cafe project. They needed two additional EDUs along with the one EDU already allocated for this parcel. All right, that's it for the authority. DARA, future expansion with the DARA. DARA said that they received West Whitelands Act 537 plan. This is, that's exciting. It is. It is. Josh knows. Uh, and they have, uh, we've received assurance that the Borough of Downingtown, Euclid and East County plans would be forthcoming shortly. Fingers crossed. All right. And as far as the fire board, we did not meet in, uh, last month, so there's no report. Moving on to historical. Anything exciting?
Always something exciting going on at the Historical Commission. And I'm not going to go into all the cool things I saw in historic Bethlehem. But wow, wow, my head just went. Historical Commission met on Wednesday, March 20th with a quorum. Nine of our 10 members were present. We also had five guests. As usual, we. As usual, we covered a lot of ground. All subcommittees reported. The Edges Mill Historic District Subcommittee expressed frustration with the State Historic Preservation Office for their lack of follow-up or tardy follow-up in getting the district on the National Register. Luckily, we have the tools and P A share to bypass much of that red tape. We've made a commitment to getting that done this year. Uh, we, our guests Carla and Dave Herkner gave a strong presentation on the Thomas Vickers House, its significance to the Underground Railroad, uh, the Vickers influence on the world of pottery and overall huge contribution to Chester County history. I just say this as a side thing that it's that really rundown, you can almost not see it. It's, it's on the, um, it's owned by, the land is owned by Tower Health. It's on the Brandywine property. But huge abolitionist and this wildly successful potter who would rat, you know, get all the, this pottery to deliver in the cart and hide um, African Americans were being liberated in the hay with the pottery and distribute it all over. And I mean, their pottery is world renowned. Uh, so anyway, uh, the Vickers came, they're concerned, you know, it is in grave state of disrepair. They've begun a local grassroots initiative to restore the house. Of course, the obstacle being Tower owns it. Uh, but they've taken some initiatives to talk, speak with, uh, even Chrissy Houlihan and Towers. So we agreed to help them any way we can and it was added to our count at risk list of endangered historic resources. Uh, with spring comes the reopening of the schoolhouse and monthly tours. The first twenty twenty-four tour will be Sunday, May fifth, I believe. Um, if you've never been inside the schoolhouse or heard its story, it's pretty cool. So come out, start your day, day there, continue it with a drive past Spackman Davis Farm and a tour of town friends meeting house and then end it with something to eat at one of our not so many eateries, but go to one of them. There are more coming. By the way, the meeting house is on the National Register of Historic Places and houses the old county historical society museum. Uh, I'll just, a little pitch on this, the Historical Commission has been working with the, uh, Francis Spackman Farm, five oh one C three on developing a plan for, um, first historic picnic at the farm. June twenty ninth, it would be, uh, featuring the longest picnic table in Chester County. Lastly, big events are on in the works. So we need a few more doers to join our team. We get a lot done, have a ton of fun doing it. Our April meeting will be next Wednesday, the seventeenth at seven P M. You can join us right here live or from home via Zoom. Oh, I'm sorry.
Aloha. Yep. Thank you, Mark. Next, Lincoln Highway.
So the Lincoln Highway Committee met at the beginning of the month. Um, and, uh, we, we talked a little bit about the zoning, um, project, the, the rezoning, we talked about that and Lincoln Highway. Um, we talked about, uh, what we, what I said earlier about the multimodal grant and trying to, uh, pick segments of the township and start small and, um, get something done. Um, we have a few follow-ups for this next meeting, um, which is the beginning of next month. So, um, we're just getting started and we're gonna get rolling.
Exciting.
I'll add, it's, it's an ad hoc as well. It's not thing where
We would bring all recommendations to the board.
Right.
You know, um, uh, we're just, uh, a group that's trying to focus on Lincoln Highway and make sure that, and now, you know, with Rite Aid's closing, we'll have a prime spot right, open right up front and center of the township.
Definitely not.
Thank you, Josh. Last, Ingleside Golf Course.
Hi, this is Lorraine Tindaro and, uh, bring you up to date on what's happening at Ingleside Golf Course. Uh, to start things off, the automatic sprinkler system is working well now. Um, we've had ads that were set up on the thirty bypass for Ingleside Golf Course. That was for about a month. So come on down to the Ingleside Golf Course. We also have placed eight location signs on Horseshoe Road, Greenbrier, Turtle Point Lane. We're now in the point that we're seeding the greens. If you walk the golf course, just to let you know that the golf, we have golf bag carriers that are now available to use if you're not fortunate enough to get a new cart. Township met with several adjacent people to the golf course. The property owners, this is regarding repair of a boarded fence. Uh, the township will be completing the repairs. Advertising on the golf carts is available for businesses. Possibly we may be heating the carts coming when it gets cold. We have new golf apparel that is coming in at many different times. Stop on down to the Ingleside Golf Course. From hats to sweatshirts, vests, all kinds of items. You have gloves, shoes. Great place to go to get the latest in golf wear. Um, on Monday, April eighth, they had a golf game set up. In the afternoon, we had the watching of the solar eclipse in Callan. There was about a ninety percent visibility. I was fortunate enough to take a trip to Erie, Pennsylvania, where they had a hundred percent totality. It was the greatest trip I've ever gone on. And hope you've all had a good time with watching the eclipse. And if you get a chance, come on down and play some golf at Ingleside Golf Course. So thank you very much. Bye.
Yeah, that eclipse was good. I know Mark's been fighting it the whole time up here, trying not to sing. Total eclipse of the heart.
Yeah, you know it, you know it. Everything under the sun is in tune, but the sun is eclipsed by the moon. I'll go with the last lines of Dark Side of the Moon.
Oh, nice. Well worth it. Must've been a nice view from the golf course, too. Yeah, I, I was on my back porch and one of my trees was kinda in, in line of, uh, the line of sight.
It was exciting.
But yeah. All right, uh, next on agenda, additional business. Additional business at this time.
Gentlemen.
Is anyone?
Wasn't there a guy out in the audience?
Yeah, there is a guy out.
Yeah. One of them wanted to speak.
Okay. Al, did you wanna come up? Yeah, public comment.
Well, thank you.
Right in, uh, public comment.
Right there. Twenty-one, one minute. Al DiMatteo, Fisherville Road, Town and Township.
Welcome, Al. Good to see you.
Hi, Al.
I am the newly elected treasurer of the, uh, Spackman Farm, um, committee.
Congratulations.
Great.
Yeah, we are a nonprofit, five oh one C three, and our first big event is going to be June the twenty ninth at the Spackman Farm. Um, just wanted to kind of see if the township would like to partner with us for this event and for events moving forward. Pretty much the reason why I'm here.
Oh. Great.
Actually, that's not all of it. Okay, so as far as Abby's concerned, I'm on the zoning committee, I'm on the Lincoln Highway committee. And in September, I'm gonna be married to my beautiful wife for fifty years. And if you put me on one more committee, I'm gonna end up being.
Al, I under, I understand you're, I understand you're one of two DiMatteos on that board.
You're not related.
That's wild. And her mom is Oh, wow. And she's a Spackman.
Yeah.
For history. Yeah. Wild. No. Yep. Laura was the, um, uh, what, Historic Preservation Lead at Chester County Planning Commission. Uh, when we started to get a, this township started to get a little traction. So really cool that she came back.
Al, thank you for all your involvement with our township.
Yes.
I, I see you everywhere, you know. That's what we need. All right, any other public comment? None here in the Oh, yes. All right, come on up. Just name and address.
Uh, Steven Bortzalis, two fifty Thornridge Drive, Thorne Dale.
Yes, welcome.
Good.
Hi.
Uh, President, Commissioners, Chief of Police, and the rest of our staff here. Just wanna start out saying thank you for giving your time, taking up the mantle that, uh, helps run our township here. My family, we enjoyed living here very much for twenty-eight years. Um, so I wanted to thank you personally for dedicating your time for us. Um, the reason why I'm here tonight is, uh, when we purchased our home at two fifty Thornridge Drive, Ralph Chamberlain built our homes and promised us many things.
Yeah.
As you guys know, um,
I live in one.
And, and, um, some of the things have been, uh, directed before. But tonight, what I'd like to speak about is the fact that, uh, where I live, these are premium lots and we had to pay extra to purchase these lots. And we were guaranteed, promised that the open space behind our, our houses here, and it's just a stretch of ground. But everyone, the seventy-five houses that were built, the owners were explained to that that would remain as, uh, open space with this statement, that that would remain, um, without anything being done to it, anything. And the big thing was, you know, uh, building homes or, or, uh, lots, uh, barbecues, trails and all those things. So I'm very grateful for that not occurring.
Yeah.
Um, now, one thing that has come up recently, and let me preface that, I've spoken to Abby Swan. You know, you have a gift in having her, uh, working here. She really is wonderful, very kind.
Thank you.
Very concerning and, uh, I respect her great, great.
She's blushing.
Yes.
She is blushing.
Embarrassed because she really is an honest person and cares. And we've spoken at, at various times. So I thought that was important to say, you know, what you have here.
Yes.
Thank you.
And you dedicated, you know, yourselves, your way from your, your families and jobs that you work through. I'm not doing it, you guys are. So that means a lot. And so you should be thanked.
We'll come get you to do something.
Well, you have my address now. But I'm greatly appreciative because I just wanted to like you for that.
Okay.
So, so what I'm trying to share is these lots were premium lots and we all had to pay to purchase these lots. Okay? The other homes did not, other than on the other side where their lots are tremendously, they go back. There are some premium, premium lots also, but ours, you see the field. And what we're looking at is country uh, environment for us. So you can have this as a country environment, uh, but not be countryside, you know? So these things were an incentive for my family and I to purchase here. And there've been some changes with it. But recently, well, as of last year, uh, one thing that was, uh, introduced, and it is a great idea. It's a great idea. And what was, was established was to develop some marshland in the back of our home, planting, uh, those type of plants and, uh, flowers. Great idea. I think it beautifies the place, but what it does is it has taken away the naturalness that what we see is what we were promised, open area. Okay? Um, and, uh, you've worked on the left side so far, which is about an acre, but is a great amount of space if you look at that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I know, I guess the state has, has freely donated seed and so on. And, uh, folks, Abby was telling me about forty people donated their time to place the seed in the ground. Well, my, my, my feelings here regarding this is you've, it, it's taken away a lot of that area. Okay? Now, the desire is to go to the other side, which is a massive area over there. Okay? My interest, and I ask you to consider this, um, and I spoke to Abby about this, that instead of taking the middle of the ground and just taking that view away from, from all of us, but basically for those who live there. Okay? Some people, I think, wouldn't mind this because they live on the other side. They don't live right there. They didn't pay the premium lots. And, and I think it's not completely proper for that to happen. So what I'm here is to say, let's work together on this thing. Okay? Um, and Abby was telling me on the other side, what, what they wanted to, what you guys wanna do is go along the perimeter. So that as, as starting this and, and I guess, uh, flags have been put up of where you wanna start. I don't know, excuse me, I don't know the amount of space that's over there. I don't know. But, um, if you go around the perimeter, that sounds great. That really beautifies, um, but I don't know how much space you're gonna be taking. And it's gonna reduce our view and the beauty. So, um, if that can, consideration for such can be thought about. And one of the, some other reasons I imagine, as I talked to Abby, is uh, the expense to cut the grass there. Okay, there is an expense. Estimation may be two thousand dollars. I don't know for sure to do that. So if you put this in, less grass to cut, right? So you're gonna save some money. Not, it's not a lot of money. And I've even suggested to her that in order to kinda work together on this, there's seventy-five houses in there. If you divide that, uh, for two thousand dollars, it's just a small amount of money. I'd be very happy to give some money towards this to save, uh, on the expense. Okay? Um,
No, I, I do have one question. Is, is this township property? Okay, so that, that's why we're doing the, the wildflowers. And as far as other residents, your neighbors, do they feel the same way?
There are people, yes, that do not desire for, for that area to, anything to be put on it. But it to beautify, that's wonderful. I don't see anything wrong with that. Just don't go in the middle of the field and, because after, after, you know, the summer is, it's, 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 the ground is like dirt brown. You're, you're taking away the beauty of what was there. Okay? So if you go along the edge, I mean, that's, that's good. Um, uh, so that's on the, on the grass issue there. Um, now, another issue that has been stated to me is because of some flooding that had happened, uh, in Downingtown and such, the idea was, well, if we put a marsh in there to absorb, okay? A main thing that has happened, but I don't know if everyone has thought about this. It's, it's, it's a, several different townships has this and the post office has this, um, about the problem that occurred. It's, it's, it's a, several different townships has this, and the post office has this about the problem that occurred with let me get it on my phone. Yes. Now, is everyone familiar with what happened with Marsh Creek Dam?
Okay.
Okay. They decided to do some adjusting with the water floodgates there, and, and it was open. And when that happened, they have, they have stated Marsh Creek Dam has been classified by the Department of Environmental Protection, Division of Dam Safety, as a high hazard dam. This is a dam so located as to endanger populated areas downstream because of its failure. All right, there's lawsuits, a lot of damage happened in Downingtown. And, and the idea was what we're doing out here now is supposed to help with the flooding issue. I don't think what's happening here is causing the flooding issue in Downingtown, okay? I think it's this, it's, it's this, it's what happened up at Marsh Creek. So we've been stating that that's what's happening, but I don't think that's the main thing. I, it was that, that dam exposure and problem.
Is there a flooding issue in, in, in this area, in, in this property, behind your house?
I've, I've been there since nineteen ninety six, when they started building for twenty, let's say twenty eight years, so, okay? I will say this on, you're causing boulevard, when it's a heavy, heavy rain, water will lay in the road, and they'd have to block off the road. But that goes down pretty quickly.
Right.
The idea was the issue in Downingtown, where there was massive flooding, that this, excuse me, this area here was like a blame for that, and I don't think it is. And that's why we're doing what we're doing back there, one, one reason. The grass, another one, to cut down the cost, and this was donated, okay, to beautify. So my suggestion is, if you could, don't take away the land that we've been interested, that we've had for so long. Some land just needs to be left alone, okay? And I know you're not building buildings, okay, and all that, I know that. But as I said it before, you know, some issues in, you know, how we purchase that land. If, if we're going to do that on the other side, leave a lot of the space alone. We don't know, Abby and I were talking, if, is that six acres on across? I don't know. I don't think it's that much. Abby was saying that what was pinned off so far was maybe an acre, okay, going down the first side. And, and that's what's going to happen this spring, summer, okay? Now, if, if it was six acres and you're taking one around the whole edge there, okay, with, with areas where, you know, people can walk, that'd be five acres left. But I don't think it's that much. The space that you're going to be taking, I think, is now, even though it's not in the center, it's going to leave such a small amount of space. It's going to be flowers all over the place. But it's not what we purchased, that's not why we purchased here, to see all that. Working together, go along the side, find out how much acreage is out there, and make sure a majority of that area is going to be left open. Okay, beautify the, beautify the field, okay? Just don't take too much for those reasons.
Okay, that's, I, I appreciate you bringing this to our attention.
Decided that this is going to happen. Does anyone know on the commission, the commissioners, how much acreage is out there? I do not know. Does anyone know?
No, no.
It would be on the, it would have. It would have been on the recorded plan, so it should show the acreage of open space, I would think.
It's fifteen acres out there, that's what that is, but you got trees in the middle, okay? But what is the actual land? The left side is supposed to be an acre. That's taking up a lot of space. If I take an acre, that acre there, okay, and go on the other side, and what's an acre? That acre is around the whole edge, okay? What else I wanted to share with you here?
And what we can do, our township manager here, and even one of the commissioners, we'd, we'd love to come out and take a look at this.
Yeah.
Just to, you know, see what, what you're experiencing. I, I know Abby's been involved with this as well, but, yeah.
I mean, just because of, as I've mentioned, when you promise something, you expect that to happen, all right?
And for twenty eight years, it was like that.
Changing the field the way it is. And I do, I really don't think that the rain on that other side now is affecting the water stream. It's a lot of water that's available, that can be soaked into the ground. Left side may be okay. What I suggest is there's a lot of space at the park. You can put flowers there and, and, and creating a marsh air. There's space in front of the building here, going down the hill, you can put flowers to absorb this water, and the water is there. You go across from the road where the stream is and put, many trees are being put in, which is great. Trees absorb a lot of water. Flowers and a marsh, it doesn't, it does, but I don't see any flowers in there, okay? And on the other side, and that's where the water is, that's where the stream is. I mean, you would think that's where you would want to put that also. Am I hanging on this?
Yeah, we, yeah, I, until we can take a look at it and see what else we can do.
Go out with you. I live, I live at two fifty Thornridge Drive, right up. Yeah, well, call me, you know, or send me a letter, whatever. Yeah, she, yeah. All right, God bless you guys, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for hanging around all night, too.
Oh, yeah, no.
Thank you.
It's a long night.
Interesting, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? None here in the township? None in Zoom? All right, well, last but not least. Well, wait a minute, before we get to adjournment, I have to say, as I started the meeting, aloha.
I know.
You'll find out next meeting why, but.
Tony's saying aloha. I got a motion and a second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you, pleasure doing business with you.